Fantastic. Thank you for being with us. If you'd like to sign to that, please do so. This time I want to turn over the budget work session to President Page from the City Manager, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and for the public, which I believe, Mayor and Council, that our public tonight is only our stakeholders, which is fantastic. We're glad to have you. But just for the record, this is a public meeting. It's not a public hearing. It is a work session to basically let Council know that from the time of July, August, the Finance Director consulted with different departments and/or stakeholders to say, hey, this is what the needs will be for 2026. So we kind of started this process months ago. We've still got a little ways to go, obviously. We had a village rate public hearing Monday evening. We'll have another one on October 23rd. At that point, we will then be able to start finalizing the preliminary draft budget that we're kind of going to walk through a little bit tonight. But we'll finalize that to then get us prepared for presenting the budget to you all at the public hearing on November 20th. So the good news is, right now, we are still on track with having the public hearing on November 20th. But we just felt as though this was a good practice to have of kind of giving you kind of an insight into, you know, where we are with some preliminary numbers. And with that, we're going to start with our partners. Part of what we do each year is we have certain allocations that we are able to provide for partners. We do have them here this evening. I'll kind of have them stand up and introduce themselves. But I kind of wanted to tee it up that a lot of the monies are already set in terms of just historical practices of what the city has funded different departments in or partners with and/or some sort of agreement type. So for instance, this Emily Godfrey with the Chamber is unable to make it this evening. She does send her regrets. But I told her that I would kind of celebrate the partnership between the city and the Chamber and to remind everyone that the city contributes a portion of Hotel Motel funds for functioning for operating at the Chamber. That is set in an agreement each year that we do annually to where they can get an allocation of the Hotel Motel monies. Additionally, we have our Downtown Development Authority, in which historically we've also carved out some monies from Hotel Motel to couple with their donations. We have the Chair been here this evening who'll kind of talk a little bit about DDA and their new evolution of crafting a budget. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with the library. To go ahead, we do allocate $2,500 each year. If you'd like to just come and stand, introduce yourself, and if you've got any handouts you want to circulate, we'll do that for you.
Yes, please. I'd love to circulate. Thank you all for letting me come. Can I as well say that we received $2,000?
Okay.
Not asking for a number. Just wanted to celebrate the last fiscal year and how much we appreciate the partnership with the city in Jasper. I love that y'all come in and use our space when we need it. I'm happy to be that face for y'all. Just celebrating some of the things from the last year. We currently have over 14,000 partners or borrowers. This is a 7% increase from last year. And we had over 57,350 visitors this year, again, more than 7% increase. And in addition, our circulation materials also went up 7% from the last fiscal year with 96,600 items circulating. We did one, but we should still have plenty of value for our community with our books, materials, and our services and our spaces. Thank you for letting me come.
And I will say that last year, we kind of go through this process kind of at more than the committee level. We've been with the library and we just kind of short out some of the monies to let them know. And also, we did commit to putting out some directional signage. And happy to report, signage was put out in 2025. I can't tell you that we're extremely happy that it was done just a few weeks back, but it did get put up in 2025. We do have about three additional signs ordered, I believe, to be installed. Also, that's going to be an initiative just to continue to say, here's some less expensive type options that we need to help partner. So now we'll hit PACA?
Do you want to just stand here?
Sure.
Okay. And I did want to say that it's 2,400 and not 2,500. Y'all are just saving money.
We're just saying, we're saying already $6,000.
So my name is Angela Renter with President with Pickens Art Culture Alliance and also Director of Art Walk Jasper. And of course, I did want to say thank you to Mayor and Council for supporting Art Walk since 2022. So we're going into our fifth year, which is crazy. Fifth year, 10th event. So the next event, which I'm thinking might be in May, is going to be our 10th event, and we're very grateful for all the support. So I am, well, first I just wanted to say that over the years, I do feel like the event is growing and I can just tell from where we're receiving applicants from artists, feedback from businesses. People are hearing about this from outside Pickens County. Like this last Art Walk, I had one of the jury artists was actually from Savannah. She drove up from Savannah to be here, so I thought that was pretty cool. But I'm just getting a lot of positive feedback from businesses. On this last one, there was really good foot traffic. It's kind of hard to tell. Everyone's so spread out and in stores, so unlike Downtown Live where everyone's in a cluster, it's hard to see how many people are there, but there were a lot of people there based on feedback. And I'm trying to do something different each event and kind of keep it fresh and new. This last time, I had a giant interactive puppet, which was very interesting. I don't know how I'm going to top that next year, but I got a lot of good feedback about that. And so I'm just trying to kind of grow the event and evolve and keep it very fresh and interesting for the public. And I am, I just wanted some feedback on this, but I am going to ask for an increase, and that's only because I'm considering bringing a third event back. I've had a lot of interest in that from city leaders, and so I'm going to have to go do a pilgrimage and meditate or something over the holidays to see if that's what I'm actually going to do. But I thought I'd go ahead and get ahead of that and request funding for a third event. And so the last couple of years, the city's funded $1,200 per event. Prior to that, it was $1,000. So I would request $1,200 for three events, which would be $3,600 for 2026. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Will your third event be similar to the other ones that you've done before, or, you know?
Unknown at this point. I don't know. I've thought about maybe doing something very different, you know, something kind of like Art Walk Lite and have it be, I don't know yet. I'm going to kind of give it some thought. And so I thought if I went ahead and requested the funding, we could address that, like, when I actually got to come back and get the dates approved. If that makes sense.
On average, what does an event cost to?
It's around $4,000, sometimes less. The biggest expense for me is related to music because I've got a headlining band and then I've got two ancillary bands on the car and is at the street. So that's a big expense in addition to prize money because it is a jury show. So that's expensive. But, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be frugal and get as creative as possible as I can. But obviously, you know, the more advertising we can do and the more kind of interesting things. We've had fire twirlers, but, you know, it all costs money. So. But usually around, around $4,000. And so PACA. I think so too. Yeah, I think so too. And of course, PACA does fund, you know, a good bit of that, and then we have some sponsorships. Again, I'm happy to answer questions.
Council, Steph, you know of any other cities that are doing something regarding Art?
I know that Canton has, it's called the West Main Festival. However, it's, the format is more kind of like your classic festival. Everyone's outside in tents. Format. So as far as people actually going inside businesses, if that's what you meant, that I'm not, I'm not aware of anything like that.
For the sky.
That doesn't mean it's not happening.
So you thought the businesses will enjoy that when they'll come in?
They really do. Yeah.
They'll get benefits.
It does, because if you think about it, I mean, you're getting patrons, potential patrons who may not have otherwise gone in the store or realized what they were selling. So.
True.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Is that it?
Sure.
Okay.
So now we have, keep Pickens beautiful. And again, I was going to say, Mary, that everybody's asked for a reduction. So we asked for a reduction and then an increase, but go ahead.
You're still welcome. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mary Khyber, the current Executive Director, past President, KTB, and this is your current president. So we've been around for about 40 years, but I'd say over the past five or six years, we've really tried to expand how we work with lots of different members within the community. And we really appreciate partnerships with the city and all of the things that we continue to do together. So to give you an overview, most of our operating budget comes from our government partners. You and the county are our biggest partners, and that covers just our office staff and insurance and that sort of thing. All of our programming, we're funded through donations and we're seeking grants and, you know, community support. We do partner with other organizations. We work with the library. We work with PACA. We work with CARE. We work with lots of different organizations throughout the community to, you know, see how I'm, KTB is irrelevant to everybody. It's all about waste reduction, education, beautification, and community building. Some of the things that we do that directly benefit the city is our adopter aid program. Most of our adoptions are actually within the Jasper city limits. Thank you, Kirk. One of our adopters, one of, yep, and they collect thousands of gallons of trash on volunteer basis from your roadside. So all of that is time that your folks don't have to be out there doing that. Our cost is roughly $200 per adopter because we provide signage at the beginning and the end of their mile or whatever section they're adopted. They get a safety vest. They get grabber sticks. They get unwrapped trash bags. They get to take their trash to the recycling center for free. So if we could get more funding, we would more heavily promote it. But right now, our signs are actually our biggest expense. And so we're trying to figure out how to refurbish our old metal with new vinyl. So always trying to figure out how we can be more cost effective. The events, we participate in pretty much any event that we're asked to participate in, most of which occur within the city. So Art Walk and Scarecrow on Main and really anything else that is going on that people ask us to participate in, we'll always, always say yes unless there's some real reason why we can't be there. Beautification, we try and find underutilized public spaces and put in sustainable gardens and, you know, any other efforts that we can do to just make our city more pretty. More pretty, it's not proper grammar, but you get, you get what I'm saying? Because when something is beautiful, people respect it. If you live here, you appreciate it, and visitors and tourists that come will appreciate the beauty of our city if it's filled with pretty things instead of empty lots. So however we can continue to help, you know, we were playing to the planters and the peace park with you and are doing other initiatives in the communities. Education, we really focus on everything that we do, having a workshop around it to try and empower people to grow their own food or to change their lifestyle habits, to reduce their waste, or whatever it is that we can do to lead by example and show people that it's, that it's not that difficult to have less of a harmful impact on our planet. And some of the groups that we work with are CAREs and we have a, I was just talking to Katie about our sad little garden at the library that's struggling along. But that's an example. We've been speaking with the Master Gardeners who we also work with, trying to figure out why our garden there over everywhere else is not succeeding. And then what we've come to is it's been sprayed for decades probably to keep the weeds down. And so now, even though it's not being sprayed, all that crap is in the ground and it's affecting our plants that we've tried to put in. So again, trying to show other ways to do things that require less chemicals and that are still attractive and sustainable. One of the biggest things on our wish list is people think that we're an info booth because we look like one. Our little office looks like an info booth and when we have the Pumpernickel Sandwich Shop serving window open, we really look like an info booth. And so people come in there all the time asking for suggestions on where to eat or where do they get their license plate or any number of things. And so if you've noticed, we've been improving our, what we call the community corner. So we've pulled out the lower pedaling shrubs and replaced it with seating, and people are always sitting there. Every day that I'm in the office, somebody is sitting in the seating that we've provided, pulling out the plants that need to be maintained and putting in herbs and things that will just take care of themselves. So we'd like, one of the original plans, if you go to our website and go to the community corner, you can see we want to add bike racks and we want to add shade trees. And there's all these other things that we want to put there. But one of the biggest things is adding a plexi board on the arbor that has QR stickers, QR codes, stickers with QR codes for all of the businesses on Main Street that will take tourists in after hours or on the weekends when the Chamber is closed and when there's nobody in our office to ask, that will direct them to what is available in town. So we have lots of things that we want to do that are going to continue to help the community in a number of ways. But, you know, times are tough and we appreciate any additional funding. The existing funding will definitely continue to accept, but if there's extra in your budget, we'll be a happy recipient of that. Any questions?
Council, is the gardener elaborate? Is that the pizza garden?
The what?
Is it the pizza garden?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we're trying. We're, we're keep fertilizing and keep building up. And I, what I've been talking with Paula Adams for the Master Gardeners about is all around the marble statue because we planted plants there and everything has died that we've put in there. So to start with just rebuilding the foundation, putting down lots of mulch and compost and pavers for like the next couple of years, and then hopefully be able to start adding more plants there. So we have a vision for that whole area, but as with any new space, you don't know what you're getting until you're there for a little while. And so, you know, figuring out what the soil is like, figuring out what the sun is like. Fortunately, there, it gets lots of, lots of water because we water it. It gets lots of sun. So the only thing could be the soil that's affecting that. So, so yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Any other questions?
No questions. Just wondering why you're tracking another scarecrow contest. My wife got it.
Oh, you like trashy? Yeah. Oh, yeah. So speaking of, we have the Little Olympics coming up. And that is last year, they picked up like 4,000 gallons of trash off of the Pickens County roads, mostly in Jasper, in two hours. So we need teams, get a team together, and it's a contest and it's super fun. We'll have a party at our office afterwards with awards and food and all kinds of things. So yes, Trashy is our mascot. He's now our scarecrow.
Thank you.
Yep. And he's made out of recycled pallets. His whole, I made an actual skeleton and it's all out of pallet wood. So he's a recycled wrecking.
So moving on, and Angela's already called you out on the increase, but if you stick around long enough, you're going to feel a lot better when you hear some department heads and what they ask for.
Okay.
Part of this is, kind of tee it up to a little bit for DDA. I did, I did speak with Parrish a little bit in terms of some reticence of saying, hey, this is, but I said, the process when it comes to budget is for the council, decision-making body, and/or the general public to know what the needs and wants are. So what you're going to see a little further in from a department leader's perspective is there's no censoring, there's no holdback, there's a needs and a want. There's also the confinement of revenues and trying to present a balanced budget when Lindsay and I can sit down. So when Parrish and I had met and talked, Carly, it's like, yes, please come and speak with council to let council know, to let the public know, because years from now, when there are additional budget monies, it doesn't look like it's a, hey, we're just, we're asking because it's available. No, we've been wanting these things for years and now that we can expand the events and now we can do 4,800, we can do 6,000 because we have more monies, we can do more things. And so it's not trying to just respond because there's more money. It's, no, now that we have, we can start ticking off some of these additional things. So tee it up. There you go.
White the disclaimer.
There you go.
Very much. Good evening. I'm Parrish Lowery. I'm the Chair of our Jasper DDA. Also want to start by saying thank you to council for your support. I think most of you that know our DDA know that it's come a long way in the past few years. Could not do that without you. Mayor Raffield was a big part of that situation with DDA several years ago. Dr. Proctor more recently, and now with Brandon coming on board. We're excited for the future. We thank you for Carly. Really do mean that we could not get the things that we're able to get done without permanent place. And most of you know about the Main Street program and what she's doing in that space. And that's going to be a big track for us to run on next year and into the following year as we look at ways to improve our downtown. So appreciate that very much. So with that, I'll just give you kind of an idea. We had a work session a month or so ago, and from that work session came some things that the DDA wanted to accomplish next year. I will tell you, there's been a lot of talk about fewer Downtown Lives. I think we had this argument last year. But we've also never, we've never come to a meeting like this with this in place, right? With sort of our wish list, as Brandon calls it. So the feedback we're getting from our downtown businesses is that without downtown residents, it is very challenging to be profitable without events. So what you're going to hear today is the board, the DDA board, is going to ask for five Downtown Lives next year in addition to a history event that Carly is responsible for, and that lines up with one of the Main Street America initiatives. We are looking at the possibility of employing an event planner to help us not just with the events, to make them better, but also fundraising. So we anticipate our fundraising efforts to be better for next year than they were for this year. That's not to say they were bad. It's just we're looking at, look ways outside the box to help them that way. Smaller events, again, on the same, on the same line as having more bigger events, our downtown businesses say even smaller events can have an impact. And you've seen that with what, thank you again for supporting the Soup Bean Festival, the Christmas, what are we calling that festival?
Mountain City Christmas. Candlelight shopping.
And, and I think the DDA board's goal is to have more of those kinds of events as well. Again, not to bring 4,000 or 5,000 people in at a time at once, but a few hundred every so often really makes a big difference for them. Downtown lighting has been an issue for a long time. We have an estimate included there to fix the downtown lighting, and I know Jack Dunn's working on that individually. We're going to take the social media and website stuff in-house, which will reduce our expenses to help offset that. Carly's big ask, can I just say?
What is it?
Bathroom signage.
Oh, please, yes.
Would you like the bathrooms, simply, it needs to know that that's what that is, a bathroom. We get a lot of question about where are the bathrooms with people standing right in front of it. Beautification, hanging basket beautification was one of the things that the DDA board wants to initiate for next year and the landscape maintenance, which will continue. So all of that to say, we expect a reduction. We're going to make some changes to the kids zone for Downtown Live next year, which will help offset expenses. Yours truly will become the DJ for Downtown Live, so we're going to not have that expense. The website, social manager expense will go away as well. And then our carryover, we estimate from last year being about a little $33,500 carryover from last year. So we're in good shape, but what that all comes out to is a total of $136,816, offset by the reduced expenses and carryover to $46,800 for a net ask of $90,016 to accomplish all those things next year. And that's an average of about $12,000 per event Downtown Live, plus the history event that we're, we don't have exact plans for that just yet, but it's in motion.
And just as a reminder, we said earlier, the monies that we receive from Hotel Motel, we do have an agreement with the Chamber that we submit. DDA, we've been funding at around $20,000, $22,000 for the last fiscal years and along with their fundraising efforts for Downtown Live. So part of why I was excited about DDA asking is to demonstrate that it's not merely just sitting on their hands saying, well, we don't have the money, so we're just not going to ask. No, you need to ask, and it doesn't necessarily mean, as you'll see through the presentation, just because it's a demonstrated need, we'll continue to operate. But you'll see from a balanced budget approach, I couldn't, as a city manager, recommend certain things. Doesn't mean that I don't support it. It's just from a balanced budget. So I do appreciate Parrish coming in and speaking on it. We'll kind of port out actus meeting, kind of the document that they submitted so you can kind of have a look at it. But again, just wanted to show, give him an opportunity, an DDA opportunity.
I appreciate that. I also, I'll just throw this out there too. Thinking about creative ways to fund some additional projects or these projects. And the Business Improvement District idea is something that I'm sort of big on. So I just want to put that on your heads tonight. I know a little bit about it. I don't know a lot about it, but I know enough to know how we can get those things started and what they do and how they can benefit, keep the dollars right on Main Street, so to speak. And so that's another, another item that I think that we can utilize to our advantage to help, you know, offset some of this cost. So.
Parrish, if I remember correctly, that starts kind of with the council, doesn't it? I think, I think we kind of, we kind of, we kind of say, we want you to do this and then.
And then there, then we have to get a vote of the impacted property owners have to vote it in. I think it's 51% have to vote it in.
Thank you, sir.
Question from me specifically. You mentioned kids zone or kids area. You want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Do you want me to go on?
You can.
Not after you let the camera? The kids zone changes. So when the kids zone first began, it was paid for by a sponsor and not coming out of our pocket. It is now coming directly out of DDA's pocket and it is a huge expense. So the options are to kind of keep ourselves in the black, so to speak, with our event budget would be to either find a new sponsor for the kids zone so that we have a brand like that is your name, this is the blank so-and-so kids zone, and they are sponsoring, they are covering that cost. Or we can make a one-time purchase of our own kids' own items that would equal out about the cost of what we would pay for the kids' own for one Downtown Live. We purchased them once, we store them and get them out and put them up each event. So those are our two options. Not to get rid of it or anything like that, but just to find a way that we are not paying out that much money four or five times, now that it's not covered by a spot truck. Can you speak?
Let's go to the rush. Thank you.
Quarter of a pound for a purchase.
$7,200.
Okay.
So if there, if we, we adjust their requested budget, are we going to be doing this on a specific item that we adjust away? Or we, we could chip in the money and then they might just adjust based on, or we thought that? So when we get, when we get to the revenues, I'd like to kind of answer that question with a statement slash question. Did it help make sense?
Yeah.
Counsel, anything for the chairs? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Brian showed up just in time for you to be done. Good timing, Brian.
Glad to all of y'all.
All right, Mr. Douglas, next item.
So counsel, part of, you'll see a little differently in terms of, I know it may be difficult to read some of this. And, and a little bit of it is intentional, that this is a draft model working document that management's been working with some of the departments on it. So it's not necessarily for dissemination, other than what you have in front of you. So it's also to allow the department leaders to be able to speak and not just merely read on operational and personnel. I would like to add the disclaimer again that Chief Dawkins, again, on Chief Chair, they're going to tell you what you need and you're going to see a little later on. And I want you to think this is some sort of like gotcha or whatever, it's just, it's unfiltered, uncensored. Now, the good thing is, you recall that we did amend the 2025 budget to allow for some training for fire and PD relative to some of our sites. It was later determined that the feasibility of doing marksmanship at the code was something that was not going to happen. Therefore, monies that have otherwise been included in that particular, you know, seventy-five thousand, were able to be reallocated towards something that we knew that the department needed, i.e. the red dots, the new blocks. Chief will talk a little bit about it, this wasn't a, we just want them because we want them. There was an actual reason behind needing to look at the future budget for it. So although we did forego some of the burning and some of the other stuff at the code for marksmanship, so no shooting, it was allowed for us to do the red dots and the new blocks order. Chief, floor's yours.
Good evening. I'll start with the blocks, so y'all have an understanding. So Glock decided that they were going to do away with the forty-chalet of blocks, which is what we carry now. So I think they've already stopped the budget. The Glock forty-sevens, what we went with, and that's when it first took that return. It was going to come, we're going to have to do it at some point. So remember that. Everything else you have on there, we go off of that. You have radar units, laser units, which they're always good to update because they're technology and they will fail eventually, you use it about every three years. They start having problems, you have to send them off, and it starts getting more expensive to fix it than just to buy a new one. So we've put in there for three radar units and one laser unit. The vehicles, we've asked for four, just to kind of keep our fleet rotated. Most of the vehicles have gone up. So we've averaged about two hundred thousand for four vehicles. The outfit one right now is going to bring us about twenty-two thousand, just for a month car. Then you have your mobile computers, your Axon cameras, the decals, the radios, all that stuff. Ends up being three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars for four vehicles, be completely. So we put in the, put on the road, that's what it's going to cost us. You'll see on software, please online, I've put this in there several times, but it is actually a very good investigative tool. What it does is anything that's pawned by anybody goes into this software. We explore across the state, across the United States, if that matters, we wanted to. And we can see who is pawning anything. So we have a burglary, we know what it looks like, we have pictures of it. We can put it on there and it'll pop up, who's pawned it, who's kept it, and where. It's also, we have like a little trial run with it, and within fifteen minutes, we saw two burglaries. So I mean, it's really, it's expensive, I get it, it's eight thousand dollars annually. But it's, it is a pretty cool, cool, okay, come on. Four uniform patrol officers. That would put us at four or three on each rotation and then give us this good shift. So that would help out a lot. But again, you have four uniform officers that hatch out of the vehicles. So you kind of back up a little bit on rotate the vehicles out. Other than that, we're going to keep the training. Obviously purchasing ammo and sim rounds and stuff like that. Every year, different team, not today, but for the show. I would say we did very good in training so far this year. We, everybody had at least forty hours by team of training. And I think they've averaged right now about sixty. So that's leaps and bounds from where we were three years ago. Which twenty hours was. Yeah, well, they were good. So, and they love doing something like in tracking, so it's just nice to see. That's where I'm at with counsel. Do I have a question?
Counsel, some questions for chief?
Thank you, sir.
So, part of it too is, just to help Chief Dawkins out, before you hear from Chief Chair, we want to let him go first, just in case, there's some money left over.
I'll do everything.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm not saying no to that.
So Chief Chair needs no disclaimer, so I'm just going to let him swim, go. Very good.
What was it you said you didn't, unfiltered?
Uncensored, unfiltered.
Unfiltered. Okay. All right, well, so for our request this budget year, I'll go ahead and start off with my approach to the budget. It's, it's, I'll forget the things we, we need and other things that we try and find grant funding if possible. Obviously, everybody here knows that grant funding is, is hard to come by sometimes because most of the time it's very targeted as to what it's for. So we're going to have to take the approach we can, and we can, it's kind of fun, but we're still applying to every grant we can. But a lot of these things on here are stuff that we just can't give with grant funding. So we're starting off with the training area. You'll see burn building is a lot higher than one. So that's a really good price for a burn building. That would be a three-story building, which would give us ISO credit for both the burn facility and a tower that doubles up there, that's one area where we lacked a little bit on our last ISO evaluation. Obviously, all this would go with the approved facility behind, or approved area behind waterline maintenance. We would be able, since there was, Chief Manager Douglas mentioned, some allocation of seventy-five thousand earlier in the year. So that would knock off at least one of, one of both of these twenty thousand on line G C L here. That we're hoping we'll be able to accomplish that this year with those monies. The only question are there the waterline hydrant? We'd have to tie a waterline, but hydrants up there close to that burn building. So that's, that's an estimate, a very rough estimate on that one. But this will allow us to kind of build out and complete the training facility area. Was, could give the department capability to, or have a rescue training, vehicle fires, auto education, live fire training, kind of give us the full spectrum. The ability to do that right here in Jasper and not in Kilo places. We have to go to places that poses a challenge for us because we have to have somebody cover the shift or cover the time on the truck. And then we also have to pay those firefighters to give us that training as well. So it kind of doubles up also there, whereas we have to here, make it a lot easier to complete while we have on-duty personnel. But that will help the south have our sidelines. Also, just in fact, just having these items helps us out my associate, like I mentioned with burn building. Probably kind of look at the training facility, because having different, different things at that facility. It's not so much having the facility, what you have there, how much you utilize. So it helps out tremendously. Moving into machinery and equipment. We have been doing a basically a replacement program. Instead of us buying a big ticket item all at once, like replacing all of our SCBA units at once, which, you know, our airbags, we put our back, we agreed on. They're running about seven thousand dollars per pack and then another, I think it's thirteen hundred dollars per cylinder.
At this point.
To outfit one truck, it takes four of those and then eight cylinders. And that's what the state looks at to make sure that that vehicle's compliant, is also what ISO looks at. So what we've been doing is to try to replace them all at once. This last time before, we started this journey, we bought some with the current engine one in two thousand eighteen. Before that was, they have cheap grant, I think, in two thousand three, if I'm not mistaken.
So, all right.
I think it was two thousand three. So what we've been doing is we've been buying four a year to up, to outfit trucks every year. Now, obviously, this year we didn't ask for four because we have to purchase four places and do things to handle them. But we're asking for four again next year. If we keep doing what we're doing, we buy four in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, we will have everything updated. But all newer style compliant SCBA units and be able to phase out all the older stuff. The fire hose, we invested in fire hose last year. That was the supply line that we put the hydrants to, then looked at the trucks. So we're trying to continue that and upgrade the lines that we use to actually pull off the truck and go in the house, put the fire out. That's what I call those are attack lines. We have enough to outfit the trucks, but we don't have any spare. So we're trying to get to a point to where we can upgrade the hoses on the trucks and take the existing and keep it as spare so we have four hoses, four lines, that's all we have. So for a place with, we're able to keep ordering. Turnout here, that's a costly thing for us, unfortunately turnout here is expensive. Seems to always get more expensive, but that's something we have to have, it's a wear item, unfortunately. It has a ten-year acceptable shelf life to be utilized, but the reality is, we're starting to work in it, as much as we work in it. Most of the time we're doing good to get five or six years. And we're trying to have a rotation there. And also you have, against us that you respond to, that maybe you weren't planning on, obviously, most of the time. But, so you have two or three sets of here contaminated with fuel or some kind of hazardous material, you've got to replace them right now. So that's why we always budget for at least five to six sets a year. That way we can handle, if somebody retires, we have to hire somebody new. We've got funding to put this, so turnout here, if we get exposed here or some, you know, gear disbarred through or something like that, we're able to replace it. The next item you'll see on there is fire nozzles for engine two and three. Those are about twenty years old. They still function, they're just, they're just getting very, very worn. So we're trying to go ahead and replace them, update them to the current stuff we have on the, the engine one, ladder one, and we'll lap on the current engines on order. Moving into vehicles, this we could actually shave down a little bit because when I was looking at vehicles originally, we were looking for a vehicle that's pursuit rated for the fire marshal time, that we don't necessarily have to do that now. So that would knock off probably about one thousand dollars of that, that correction from a vehicle kind of group to buy. So, so we could shave a little bit there now that we don't have to have a necessarily pursuit rated vehicle. We're trying to do kind of a dual role there, where we have a vehicle that the fire marshal time could, you know, work both sides of the fence, unfortunately, and firewall, as well as all the necessary equipment for fire marshal position. So we don't necessarily have to worry about that pursuit rate at this point, and we could replace that. That vehicle would allow us, one, have a vehicle that's more suited for fire marshal position. And two, it would also allow us to end up with, with actually one pool vehicle, whereas right now we don't have one. And what we would do with that pool vehicle, send people to training. That way we don't end up paying mileage. If we put in a official vehicle and send them, that's a lot less expense unless that way we do. Most of the time employees are depreciated as well.
They care about the vehicles.
It also looks good to the department when they see us out there and see us going to different places and you training. It's also just kind of a recruitment tool in that way. So we put repainting engine three, but what that really is, is repairing some body damage to the fact of it. It's a little bit of body damage that we wanted to repair. And that was going to run us about, I think, four thousand dollars to do that. And so, well, if you're willing to do that for four thousand, what would it cost us to actually get the truck repainted? And that's from the price they give us for two thousand. Very many fair spots we could have. And we've got a couple of places where it looks like some tire chains came off a couple of years ago, beat up a little bit. So that would take care of remedy that. And then of course you see the larger number, which is a refurbishment for engine two. Again, we're doing a replacement program. We're trying to get to a position to where we're keeping in-service fire apparatus as far as our engines in service for fifteen years, and then they do five years as a reserve, and then they move out of fleet. The purpose behind that is, studies have shown that most of the time fifteen years is a good benchmark for how long you have in service. And it allows for a good rotation as well. But with engine three, that's an, engine two, excuse me, that's a two thousand three K V, the C D ball new. We're very confident, very happy that apparatus is a great apparatus, it's just has a lot of birthdays and refurbishment would do as good. We're looking at that in lieu of trying to go right out, purchase another new engine, keep our rotation going. That particular model is pre-emissions, pre-def, which is causing a lot of chaos in fire service as far as our vehicles. A lot of mechanical issues due to those components that are federally mandated on there. Whereas this one was built prior to that, and we don't relate to those issues. So we can see where, we could refurbish that engine and get, you know, probably five, about ten more years out of it, frontline service versus having to spend what would essentially be a billion dollars on a new apparatus. So we're trying to, trying to find ways to be more cost-effective and also, you know, keep the fleet updated like we need to. And then we put on there to wrap the F two fifty and F one fifty. What that basically is, is redoing the bottom half of where they'd be red, match our fleet. Also could begin it, it's Chevron's on the back, now it goes V plus for Chevron, which is the end of your foreign language for response apparatus. You'll see that, we do that on all vehicles we purchase, which is in the back of the assistant chief's truck, hot cars. It's on the back of the engines as well, you can see where that Chevron is. That way you can see this, my, let's just. Personnel wise, we're asking for three full-time, three part-time fire officers. The reason we're asking for that. Obviously, our call volume keeps increasing, so demand for service keeps increasing. So currently we have a five-man minimum, five personnel level, five firefighters, all new these are one time, that includes the officers. We need to move to a position to where we always have three staff units. So we're using, currently using part-time to try and run six as much as possible and cover for personnel that maybe all forgot to train. We've been able to do this with some some chest, but not consistently. Obviously, when we open station fourteen, we're going to have to run six people consistently, our minimum move by six. The reason that's happening is that we always put at least two people for apparatus. That's a safety issue also, performance issue. The more, studies show, the more people we put on apparatus, the more efficient, more effective they are, especially when it comes to house fires. So allowing us to put the three full-time, three part-time, but help us ensure that we have a little bit of a release factor. So if somebody takes off, we can sure we have that coverage. Right now, like I said, we're continuing, we're operating and we're hitting six some of the time, not all the time. But it's half two we open that station. If we don't make some changes there, I expect to see overtime increasing.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for?
Counselor? Thank you, chief. Mr. Douglas?
So before we get off of police and fire, I do want to remind counsel, I know it may seem just like yesterday, but it may seem like a lot time ago. But the capital that you've heard from, obviously the personnel is a separate issue, we'll, we'll talk about momentarily. But a lot of the capital projects that they've asked for, vehicles, equipment, et cetera, we have been able to fund out of the twenty-twenty swaps. You may recall that up until the twenty nineteen referendum calling for the twenty-twenty swap, there had never been a call out for public safety included in swaps. It had always been for the previous swaps, referendums, roads, streets, bridges, et cetera. So what we have done in the last four years, because even though you start collecting in June of twenty twenty, you really don't start building up enough cash to do anything. So twenty twenty-one, so for the last four years, we have been on this journey of trying to navigate and balance between all the different wants and needs from a capital perspective, i.e. police, fire, roads, arcs, stormwater, et cetera. So just wanted to draw attention to the fact that a lot of what you see is kind of a, a new beginning of sorts. Obviously, having the chiefs in their role in the last three years, in addition to giving them the resources they need is important. But the one reason why I asked to go ahead and put this in is to show you what it would look like in terms of a general fund allocation. So with that, we'll just move on, unless y'all got anything on those two? Good deal. And Josh is not here, so he wants his budget zeroed out. So the chiefs will fight over. In all sincerity, the, Josh is out helping Charles and the crew. In, in all sincerity, um, the, uh, Josh is out helping, um, Charles and the crew, uh, deal with some issues that come up. So, uh, he's wanted to be here, but he cannot be. So we do want to draw special attention to the fact that the, uh, the street department is not asking for any additional personnel. Uh, they have done some, uh, reord in terms of utilizing, uh, some folks. Um, they are fully staffed at this moment, so that's always helpful. Up until about first quarter of this year, um, they have been running probably about three, uh, less and had some inefficiencies personnel wise. So what you've been seeing over the last six months or so is the respective leader with the full department operating. Uh, admittedly, they do need a couple of more utility trailers, uh, an enclosed trailer. We do quite a few events, uh, to help, uh, supplement some of the personnel needed for, uh, the mainstream events. Uh, so the utility trailers would be helpful and the closing trailer. Um, variable message board. Currently, um, we are unable to put one of those nice little boards out. And we have, uh, work being done on Noah and Jonah on the pipe. So we rely on digital social media, uh, versus hooking one up, putting it far enough in advance where it can notify voters. At, um, uh, special events, uh, even though we do a lot of pre-planning, uh, we do rely on the generosity of the county. And more often than not, if they are not in use of it, they are only way more happy to allow us because they understand the importance of those boards communicating. Uh, asking for a few of those, a couple of mowers, um, albeit I don't think we've really had to, um, purchase. Because I know nineteen, twenty twenty one, we've, we've purchased some, but again, those things were out, the more you use them on right away. Um, the bush hog bucket for skid steer, striping machine. Uh, if you look behind City Hall, you'll see their public works building, needs a little bit of love, a little touch of paint. And, uh, two service trucks. Right now we're able to, um, utilize of an existing pickup truck and just revert the bed to a, a service body. Uh, pretty reasonably priced, under ten thousand. But, uh, we do have a couple of service trucks that are gonna be at end of life pretty soon. Uh, so he's going ahead and asking for that. And, uh, looking at automation, um, the gate, two public works to back here and looking at a pole bar. So all told, those were his capital requests, uh, no personnel. And just as a reminder, and I'm probably gonna say this again. You got personnel operating in capital. Typically the way from governmental accounting is anything we capitalize anything over five thousand dollars, I believe. Uh, so we would say capital items, these big ticket type items, operating to help people do their job. So I just wanted to make sure y'all know those two buckets. Uh, from a parks perspective, looking at that, doing a new bathroom roof at the bathroom at City Park, along with some, uh, lighting. Uh, right now, uh, Mr. Hannah brought up Monday evening, we were able to go ahead and, and, uh, pay some money to Georgia Power to put some butt lights, uh, that it's going to be brights, but illuminated, but it doesn't necessarily have the same aesthetics and appeal that. Some of the more decorative lighting they have, but those have definitely run its, this course. So, uh, looking at that, along with looking at, uh, doing some new stage vacuums down at the, uh, building that leaded. So. Any questions, concerns, comments about that? And just to let you know, Lindsay is playing any notes or anything, uh, for our reference. So for the work session, feel free to, so you need that.
Thanks, sir.
Next up. Emmy.
Jay Payne, um. Yeah, when he said that we weren't gonna fund anything, I didn't shoot anything into my budget, so. Yeah, we talked about doing the Eplan software. Honestly, I'm too busy to even try and onboard it, so don't really need it. Uh, well, we definitely need it, just a bit, we're not in a place where it can, we're not slow enough yet to be able to take the time that it takes to implement these things. That it takes, you know, twelve, eighteen weeks of five hours of devoted time to get it worked, so. Um, you know, we have been talking about the entryway refurbishment, you know, trying to change how people approach the building department. Cause we're kind of isolated down there and, you know, we have had a couple of times where we have asked, had to ask people to leave. It's uncomfortable and it goes hand in hand with what Josh is asking for for the security gate. So that we could reshape that downstairs so that people would be parking on this side and entering where that window is now. So changing that entryway and then that'll be a controlled entrance way with a half door that will be closed and just to M L. So you're not gonna have full access to our entire office anymore, so. Um, it's a really, you know, we, it'd be really great for us, you know, with, uh, some of the people that happen to come into our office that are less than happy with the situation that's going on. And you only have us three down there, so, um, you know, it would be a great addition, uh, and definitely needed for the safety aspect as well as, you know, flucking off that. Uh, access to, uh, the back of the yard over here. So, um, you know, uh, we, the, the truck we got and water we got, both amazing, working perfectly. Don't need any paint and don't, and we'll need some fuel, but I'm good on everything else.
Okay, and part of, uh, I asked you just to go ahead and include that because it was a great opportunity for us just to say that. The monies that we had allocated, um, for facilities in the twenty twenty five budget amendments. We are hopeful that we will be able to use that capital allocation towards doing the entryway. Because again, what we're trying to do is create a public access area just out here. Enter in front door, enter in the front door there. And being able to have this more of a restricted area for employees only, uh, just from a purely best practice standpoint, that's what you did. So hopefully we'll be able to have some money to do that.
When you say that, oh, I have time to, it's, uh, next year, you know, you don't only look for C like two, three, two, four, I can't have the time. This, so this actually came up over the three people who showed up on my walk with the council. One of the ladies that showed up, she was advocating for you to have this software. Um, and so I was just curious to know that.
So right now, uh, I know it, it may, just because we're under the suspension and stuff, you know, uh, it, it may seem like we might have extra time. But, uh, we have taken on additional responsibilities. Uh, we also are incredibly efficient in our turnaround times. Uh, we are also, uh, you know, we, we hire out our building inspections. So every building permit is now handled by us, um, instead of having our building inspector handle that. So it's an additional load on us as well. Um, one of the, you know, we do a lot of, you know, permitting and we, we've kind of, um. The, the software would definitely help, but you know, with, you know, we have at least a number of three houses, three hundred houses next year. Um, we have erosion inspections weekly. Um, I did have, you know, for, you know, for things that are going on right now, say with development. If, uh, you know, we had the Chambers Street apartments under units, John Marine face two of them to be only, only, but doing all the horizontal. The gateway commercial, which is twenty two thousand square feet, hasn't even gone, um, vertical yet. We've got the credit union, we've got Haley Farms, which is an additional under units. Rollin' Beto's an additional ninety units, gateway face three, an additional hundred and eleven units. And then we have Clipper Petro, Crenshaw Auto, First Mountain Liquor, Jasper Gas Station and West Church Gas Station, Longhorn. Um, anyone else has decided to. So I know it may seem like I'm not gonna have it, we're gonna have plenty of time, but I swear. It, it, not to mention the conference plan, uh, we're trying to throw that in there too. And then we got plan first, gonna look at CBD, CBD, CBVG, you know, grants, you know, it's just. Gotta have good policies and procedures in place in order to have an effective Eplan anything. And we're just not there yet.
Does she figure out the scheme?
Next up. So just, uh, to recap the process, what, what Lindsay does is she calls for the, uh, department leaders to give her the, the needs and wants. So definitely needs at this point, but basically say, okay, let's get it all together, compile it all. And then she sits and, and we kind of went through probably four or five different iterations of what the potential twenty twenty six, uh, estimated revenue would be. Uh, this is, uh, predicated on the current, uh, six point two two one millage rate. Uh, so you'll see kind of towards the, the top line under fund balance on the side, you will see the, the two point five along with, that's real. Uh, then you've got personal, uh, property tax. Then you have all the other ninety plus line items that I'm not gonna, unless you want us to. We weren't gonna necessarily go through line by line, but hitting some of the big ones, uh, such as the T V T, the, um, franchise, the local option sales tax. Uh, I will say that I am typically ultra conservative with respect to, uh, revenue. So what you're gonna see is, uh, Lindsay and I tried to land on something at the very end of this revenue. What we feel as though we could possibly hit for twenty twenty six. But I always add the disclaimer that if one of these numbers such as local office sales tax, something that's consumerism driven, we do not have control of. That's the, the one set that, you know, we have no control of, it could be two point one, it could be two point two. So that end of the cell has a pretty significant motivation. Uh, although you've heard that, uh, there is a lot of existing, uh, buildings that a lot of it again, in terms of planning and, uh, implementation, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. The way that the evolution of local government works is you may get zoning in place. And then a year later, you may have some sort of development site plans and then a year later, you may have someone who comes in and, and kind of fills permits. You have someone again vocalizing, so all of a sudden, when you hear something that was resold in twenty eighteen, that is accounted for in terms of say, hey, this is gonna happen. So last year, mid-year, twenty twenty four, you heard me talk about some of the, the anticipated revenue from building, uh, permits. Uh, just had not materialized because again, we can't control that. Yes, we know this is gonna happen, we know that the plans are approved, we know the stuff's in place, but we have no control making them do it. So even though all the stuff that he's talking about, we have to be conscientious that, hey, this number here of one fifty might be one hundred. It might be three hundred. So we try to land somewhere that's conceivable for twenty twenty six. Uh, at the time that we had developed this estimated revenue, uh, we were probably about a hundred and eighty this year. Uh, I think that has ticked up for twenty twenty five. So that's good, that's revenue that you will realize one time relative to the anticipated worksheet of here are these projects that we know were approved, just a matter of materializing. So those are kind of your big ticket items relative to, uh, revenue. It doesn't marginalize the importance of other line items, uh, because of the ninety or so line items. It, it takes it all, but you know, you just have to try to manage the best you can. Uh, in regards to the difference between D D A and maybe some of our other partners is D D A is a component unit of the city. So they are included with respect to departmental budgeting, governmental accounting in terms of us including them in our conference financial reports. So you'll see that the revenue, there's a donation line, so to speak, um, that we anticipate, hey, they're gonna potentially receiving that much in donations and hotel motel tax, uh, barring anything else we're seeing. Uh, this should result in about twenty thousand that we're able to contribute, uh, to them. So that's the revenue. Um, and so we anticipate just under eight million, uh, in twenty twenty six revenue. So good news is, you know, we, uh, we went a little aggressive on a few lines based upon where we were ending July, August of this year. Anticipating forecasting for twenty twenty six. However, based upon the department request you heard, uh, that would result in a pretty significant negative. So this is where Lindsay and I start. So back in August, we're looking at this and, and this is kind of where we landed. Uh, now clearly, um, we're supposed to present a more balanced budget to you all. And so we have to communicate, you heard Emmy say, well, this is gonna need to cut. Yep, because that's not sustainable. So what we have to do is we then go into looking at the general fund budget of our expenditures. Pretty much always steady with personnel. So whenever you start looking at ways to, um, find money, you know, you look and you say, okay, well, what does your budget look like? So I've tried to break it down into about eighty, eighty one percent of our budget is comprised of personnel related expenses. So this just means that our existing team has pretty well been the same number of employees for quite a while. Um, cause I believe the chief in chief have continued to still need additional personnel, that's just not been able to be funded. Um, that's a pretty significant chunk of the, the budget. The operating, um, again, differentiating personnel, operating, uh, even so much as, you know, I would put it into insurance, the liability. Not health insurance, that would be up underneath your personnel, but your liability insurance, um, communications, uh, building, maintenance, et cetera, is under the heading of operating. So going back, just to kind of help you out, the, the left column is your account name, the top is the different departments. So then you look at saying, okay, well, here's some, some, uh, across the board, travel, dues, fees, training, uh, supplies, material, gas, electricity, uh, streetlights. You can see that we pay nearly two hundred thousand now, uh, just in streetlight costs. Uh, that's just a practice that municipalities do in terms of picking up that cost. Um, then, uh, obviously you have other small items, small equipment, um, uniforms. Um, so those are your operating. So you take your personnel and your operating, I mean, you're looking at a pretty significant amount of your general fund budget. So the easiest slide of tonight is this one.
Yes.
So that's zero. Because again, when you're starting here and you say, okay, well, how do we maintain the status quo, the existing? Continue to try to keep services and still operate those services. That means you have to sacrifice no capital upgrades. So then I, I believe Lindsay's probably most proud of, of this, uh, albeit she'd like this last one to, to not be there. That's, that's what I, but you're looking at less than two percent debt service. Now, part of going back to the debt services, we have to include this, um, radio expenditure because again, there is no capital expenditure in a line item. And so we have to say, well, if next June, our first payment is due to Monrova for the new handhelds, we have to pay for it. So we include it on our debt fund sheet. So when you look at the expenditures, uh, obviously, uh, even with, you know, keeping status quo, uh, we are running, uh, you know, not quite as bad. I believe, uh, I'm gonna give complete credit to Lindsay. I believe, uh, I'm going to give complete credit to Lindsay for giving the most balanced budget you could. So part of what we have utilized in the past is fund balance from savings. So what we would ask is if the council wanted to add in something from a department, uh, the easiest way is this number increases to offset that cost. Um, if council looks and says, well, gee, we don't really like three sixty use of fund balance, I would ask for council to, to get with the respective admin committee or staff. What, what can we do? And then part of what I would say is, well, from personnel and from operating, we have done at management side, Kim, Lindsay and I, about as much as we can do to scale it down. Now there are some unknowns. If in fact, we're able to utilize the 2026 SPOS, if the voters were to approve that referendum, that hundred thousand in debt service could be eliminated because then that would be ineligible projects to public safety for police and fire, uh, as would be included referendum of public safety. So that number would immediately go to two sixty-three. So that's just a simple math. If you were to have a pretty good chunk of people driving through, spending money, uh, at the dude public Chick-fil-A long fours, et cetera, and increases the, the lost local auction sales tax collections, instead of getting two point three million, maybe we get two point four million. Well, we budgeted to get two point three. You don't know where to land, so we're just trying to be conscientious of, hey, maybe we'll get there. Uh, but if we're two point four, then that number goes down another number. So again, I, I'm not trying to oversimplify government accounting, but I am trying to put it in terms that even I can understand that obviously this is great because I respect the departments and their needs, but you can't. So this is where we land with the caveat that if we have a pretty good tailwind on some things, um, that could probably exert a downwind one more. So council, any questions? Sorry, Chris? Anything else? All right. So Mayor, Mayor, you're in office.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so. Obviously, um, you know, we just walked through the, the general fund. Um, again, if you've got any questions, feel free to, to reach out to the department leaders. Um, you know, again, this is not anything more than just my best practice to do. Thanks to our partners for, for sticking around and seeing it. Told you you'd feel better.
I do.
I was gonna, I was going to amend my request until Mary Elizabeth started talking.
Yeah. Because I didn't want y'all to hear that versus, oh, I'm happy for twelve hundred.
It just kept going downhill, so I decided. Yeah.
So, uh, on a, a completely separate, uh, note, has nothing to do with the general fund or anything we've talked about this evening, but under the heading of the, the business fund, the enterprise, uh, obviously, uh, you are aware that there are some, some waterline challenges with respect to, to, you know, Twin Mountain Lakes or some other areas. And unfortunately, those are just unbudgeted expenses that, you know, half a million plus dollar, um, fixes would be required. Now, what, what we talked about is SPOS is an available tool, uh, for, uh, because the referendum in 2019 for the 2020 SPOS did have a language for all the above. So it was kind of this, the way that the council approved the referendum, the voters approved was, here are the monies. We are nearly complete with some of the last deliverables, uh, of SPOS. Uh, the SPOS-funded fire station, Station fourteen, the fire engine, um, just pro park. All these SPOS initiatives are getting closer to the point of us say, hey, we've had the monies encumbered through SPOS, nothing through here. So now we've got those collections until June of 2026. So Kim had an idea to try to help, uh, look at ways of funding some capital, uh, that we do know is needed.
So as you know, in SPOS, the 2020 SPOS, we had encumbered a hundred thousand dollars each month towards the end of SPOS. And that was intended to go to the 2024 TAP grant, which is the project that is specifically for sidewalks along North Main Street, starting at Chambers, going up to basically Revolution Church. That project is an all-encompassing project from GDOT. That is preliminary engineering and design, that is any associated utilities that have to be relocated. And then that is the actual construction of the sidewalk as well. We were granted two point two-five-one million dollars for that. We have a matching component to that, twenty percent. And so when we were first awarded the TAP grant, it was about one point six. As costs started escalating, GDOT reached out to us and said, hey, the preliminary engineering number is not high enough, we recognize that. We're going to bump that amount up. That results in an additional bump in our matching amount. And so we went from three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to about two hundred and fifty thousand. We told GDOT that we could not accommodate that additional bump. We could come up with three hundred and thirty, we had already encumbered three hundred thousand for this project, but four hundred and fifty was unrealistic for us. And they came through, they found that additional grant, matching grant amount through their, uh, state infrastructure bank dollars, and that's the governor's fund. And so they have essentially paid for what our match is for preliminary engineering and design. This project has not started yet. GDOT has not started any of the preliminary engineering. We actually have a meeting, the first meeting that we'll have is at the end of October, and that is to discuss scope. So we have three hundred thousand dollars that will then be our match for when we get to the utility portion and to the actual construction of sidewalk. We could be looking at 2028 before we ever get to that point. My suggestion would be not that three hundred thousand dollars, unencumber it from sidewalk, and that goes a long way towards funding what we need to have for the Twin Mountain Lakes section. That is completely up to you all.
Do you plan on presenting this in our next meeting for consideration? Part, part of what we had wanted to do is in anticipation of preparing, because again, this is what we're working with, so we have no monies for capital. That includes infrastructure sidewalks. So all those, SPOS has nothing to do with this and has nothing to do with water. Because we were trying to leverage to help get some of that other needed infrastructure, we did want council's buy-in to say, hey, we're not voting tonight, we're not doing anything, but before we go and try to scramble and, and take the, the other budgets and, and look at ways to, to do things, we wanted to make sure that y'all are receptive to, to us looking at it.
So it's a double-edged sword. You know, we talk about connectivity, the walkability of a community. And I think that North Main Street has been a priority for councils to make sure that we have safe walking areas, you know, uh, an ability for folks to get to essential services, to be able to get to downtown, to get back on those sorts of things. I think there are additional opportunities with GDOT. Obviously, I cannot guarantee that because that is, according to what their funding is, you know, as we get a little bigger, we no longer fall with under the five thousand population limit, which is what we are being captured under currently with all of our TAP grants. You know, they, they have the larger projects than they have the under five thousand populations. So we've been able to capitalize on those TAP grants through that. GDOT is aware of our situation. We are working currently on the 2023 TAP grant where the match has already been paid. That was paid out of 2014 SPOS. Um, so we are good to go there, but that is only a preliminary engineering project. And that's four segments. The cost estimate has come back at three point eight million dollars to do the sidewalks in those four areas, including utility relocations. That is considerably higher than anything that we had ever imagined. And a twenty percent match on getting additional funding through TAP on three point eight million dollars is considerably more than what we're talking about now. We have real needs with the utilities, we have real needs with sidewalks too. And so I, I can appreciate that this is going to be a very difficult decision. I, I can imagine, I, I, I don't really know what to offer other than we do have real needs and the utility has these needs as well. It seems to be a more immediate need to go.
If staff can prepare that for the next meeting, um, that opportunity for action from the legislative board for consideration.
Okay.
And, and just, just to let y'all know, the, the, the simple but not simple is it would probably derive through a, a budget amendment in terms of the, the SPOS budget, that spreadsheet you're familiar with, where you're unencumbering certain funds through the legislative act to then encumber it for this. So we still have a process to go through in terms of say, hey, this is how we are going to have to, you know, bid something or get on demand or do something. Because again, I think someone had told me seventies was when that infrastructure, and there hadn't been anything other than just wraparound and some other things. So you're looking at almost fifty years. So that's why you're looking at five hundred plus, because every time you continue to defer maintenance on things, whereas a two-inch might not have been that much five, well, fifty years ago. When you're trying to then do something to it now, it's going to be exponentially.
Right, and two inches is not an option to go back. That, that does not meet current regulations. And so it's one thing to say, okay, well, let's just replace and place and call it a day. We do not have that option.
So yes, we will, we'll have the, uh, it'd be in the form of a resolution or budget amendment for, uh, the 2020 SPOS, um, allocations, uh, and that should suffice.
So the minimum standard for fire protection is six inch, and they're actually trying to increase that, or maybe they have already worked on increasing that to eight inch. We would be limited by what we have feeding that area though. So an eight-inch line does not make sense when you have six inch or four inch or something else feeding those areas. We have a six-inch line that is going into there. I'm not sure why it reduces down to two other than, my guess is it was probably easier to put that in at that time. It will work, it's way too long for the number of services you got on it though. So, you know, it's just not an option. It is not an option.
Thank you. Anything further from administration? That's it. Council, any questions?
About our ISO rating, if we put it in here, while we're lying out there. The Twin Mountain Lakes.
So we have really good pressure out there. Part of that is because we've had too much talk. Um, but we have really excellent pressure there for other reasons too. So, you know, it, obviously you're going to have some hydrants now where you didn't before. So that may be of some assistance.
Just want to tone silk, line away.
All right, you know, the business, we're adjourned.